Okay, we are recording.
Great. So Theresa, help me get through identifying for a record. Normally speaking, when we meet in person, people sign in a sign-in sheet. So we have a record of who's attended our meetings. We can only see the fact that people are here. And so Theresa, would you please do me the favor of trying to go through and figure out who's there and get the names to the record for us?
Okay, we got here. 612-874-1708. Can you identify yourself?
Jesse Preiner.
Jesse Preiner, okay. Thank you. And then we have 651-216-6200.
Janet Haglund.
Janet Haglund. Thank you. 651-647-0506.
Pat Clarence is now joining.
Arlen Logren at 6470506.
Okay. And let's see that, 651-647-0506 was Pat.
I think that she joined the meeting the same time I was going to give my identification out.
That's you, Arlen.
That's me, yep.
Logren. Very good. Thank you. Okay, 651-464-8908.
That's Tom Olsen.
I apologize, I can't see the numbers. Okay.
This is Scott Schulte, should be 7633006244.
Scott Schulte. Very good, thank you. 651, oh, that's a new one. I'm sorry, 651-285-9348.
That's Pat Clarence.
Pat Clarence?
Yes, C-L-E-A-R-E-N-C-E.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. We have a, I'm sorry, these numbers are popping all over the screen.
That was Tom Olsen.
Okay, I apologize, they're moving around, so. Okay.
It's Dave Pavoni.
Dave Pavoni. Okay. Okay. This is, I think we have a.
Unknown participant is now joining.
That was Dave Pavoni.
Yeah, I'm sorry. They keep moving around.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Okay, one just left. Okay, let's see.
Theresa, we have one ending in 24 that hasn't been identified.
Can you read the whole number?
I don't see the whole number, but it ends in 24.
24.
Tim Watson.
Is now joining.
Tim Watson.
And there are, there are two participants that end in 48. One is Pat Clarence, but there's another one.
Tom Olsen.
Scott Robinson.
Scott Robinson.
I have 11.
Two participants are now joining.
Mr. Chair, I think if the two new participants would identify themselves, we have them all accounted for.
If you got a full number with the last four, 4354, that's Dan Mike.
Thank you.
This is Shelley Logren.
Thank you.
Theresa, this is Steve, and my wife may pop in in the middle, and she probably won't be able to, to identify herself because she's in a hospital.
I'm on Sue Wegeman, I'm 651.
There we go. So is there anyone that we have not identified?
Tim Watson.
Tim Watson.
Thank you for patience in this process. I'm Mike Bradley, I am the vice chairperson. And I have been asked to. Close this meeting because of the issue involves.
Have they not started yet?
Now, it's direct interest of Pat Preiner, who's our president. And so I have been receiving from Tom Zach, our administrator, the campaign material that had John Waller's name and title as a manager for Rice Creek on it. I've been working with Nick and his staff to try to develop a position paper. What did we agree with or disagree with? It was raised in the material.
Yeah.
And called for a special meeting.
You'll say your name when you're introduced into the meeting.
Called this meeting for the purpose of deciding if and how we should respond to the information.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, perhaps the host, Theresa, can mute everyone's line?
Marcy's asking if you're not going to speak to us directly, that we please, you're not cross-talking over us.
Thank you.
So anyway, I worked with Lou Smith, who's our district attorney, and Nick Tom Zach, to call a special meeting for the sole purpose of determining what, and what, if anything, we should respond to the material that carries John J. Walker's, Waller's Rice Creek Watershed District Manager position on treatment of various issues involving Rice Creek. And given some thought on how we can most effectively go through this thing. We're only, I think, based on Robert's Rules of Order, I would ask, we start with a simple motion to adopt the statement that was presided to us by our staff. If we see we get a second on it, then I would go back and ask each manager, give each manager an opportunity to provide comments. So do I have a motion to adopt that statement?
Mr. Chair, this is Manager Weinert. I would move that we adopt the statement, and I'm trying to find the title of it. Nick, if. What did we call it?
Manager Weinert?
Yes.
The current title of the document states, "Statement of Rice Creek Watershed District Regarding Wetland Banking and Related Issues in Anoka County, Mailed Campaign Brochure of Dave, forgive me, Pete Pavoni."
So Marcy Weinert, Marcy Weinert has moved that we approve that because of the fact that this, this issue involves the direct interest of three of our managers. I, as the vice chair, am going to second that. And at this point, I'm going to open up, I'm going to allow each one of their managers an opportunity to speak, and I, Pat Preiner has requested that she be allowed to speak first to me. And therefore, I'm going to honor that. Pat, go ahead and make your statement.
Thank you. I have two issues that have to be talked about, and so I'm going to read the comments because I want it to be accurate in the minutes and future uses of this, of the product that I produced. As I attend the Rice Creek Watershed meeting today, I wear two hats. The head of President of the Rice Creek Watershed, with the residents and board managers of the district as my constituents. And second, as a private citizen representing the concerns of the Preiner and Wegeman families. I will begin my comments as a president of the Rice Creek Watershed District, a position I have held for over 12 years. Sadly, one of our board members has chosen to interfere with the county and city election by presenting false statements in a written letter to the City of Columbus residents. And by signing a statement as a Rice Creek Watershed District manager.
Is now joining.
Deceivingly representing those statements as a position of the Rice Creek Watershed District Managers. This is a blatant violation of the Rice Creek Watershed bylaws under Article 6, Code of Ethics, Section 6, False or Fraudulent Information, and Section 7, Malfeasance, Nonfeasance, and Misfeasance. By doing so, he has created a situation where we, as a Rice Creek Watershed Board, have the responsibility to publicly correct the record. As we proceed with discussions on how to best address the comments made by Manager Waller and correct the misinformation as he distributed to the residents of Columbus, we must also realize that the Watershed District's correction of the record is factual, not political. It would be inappropriate for it to be distributed by a campaign, and therefore must be, instead be distributed by the watershed, at the watershed's expense, to the affected parties. These would include Columbus residents, city council and city administrator, Anoka, and Washington County Board of Commissioners, and the county administrators. Now, as a private citizen, please allow me to share my sentiments. I never would, I never would be glad to, both of my parents have passed away, so they would not have to withstand our family being dragged through our, with their accusations of corruption, through the mud. But today I am. The Preiner family has been in Columbus since 1940. We have built several successful businesses and participated in local politics since the beginning, having built a positive name through many years of hard work and community involvement. We were therefore shocked that Mr. Waller would try to interfere with the City of Columbus' local election by making false and defamatory statements in the attempt to undermine my brother's bid for second-term mayor and Sue Wegeman, Manager Wegeman's wife candidacy for the city council. I cannot make sense of these actions, and I can only conclude that John Waller is a petty vindictive and self-absorbed person willing to risk the reputation of the Watershed District to politically attack my brother and Manager Wegeman's wife with bold-faced lies just two weeks before the election. For what cause? Obviously, his goal was to destroy the Preiner-Wegeman names in our community. The district has accomplished numerous positive things despite the misconduct of John Waller and negative impacts he has created. Through his repeatedly irresponsible and malicious acts, he has established a history of repudiating Rice Creek Watershed Board goals and representing his own views as those of the Watershed Board. Over the years, this has cost this district in terms of staff turnover, low morale, legal fees, and inefficiencies as resources are deployed to counteract his acts of misconduct. As such, he has made himself a liability to this board. If John Waller were a decent man, he would issue a written apology to the candidates, their families, the voting public of Columbus and Washington County Board of Commissioners to be published on the Rice Creek Watershed website, Anoka and Washington County newspapers and websites, the Forsyth Time, and the City of Columbus website. Then he should resign from this board in disgrace. If he chooses not to resign, I submit that based on his malfeasance, the Washington County Board should remove Mr. Waller and name a replacement that is willing to abide by the district's bylaws and participate as a board member in good standing. Thank you, Manager Preiner.
Steve, a call on you at this point. Manager Wegeman? You're muted. You're still muted. Sorry, my screen moved and I couldn't get to my mute button. I apologize for that. First of all, I agree with everything that Manager Preiner had to say, and I don't need to repeat all the statutes and all of that stuff. I just kind of wanted to come at this from a personal standpoint. I don't know if anybody can understand what it's like to go through this until they've actually gone through it. I would have never expected what has come out of this, to come out of it. We also have a decent family name. My wife is an honest, ethical person. She was running for council. I've also run a business for several years and have been honest and ethical doing that. And I have served the community also in good standing and was quite shocked to see what was in that campaign literature. My wife, I don't know what it's done to her. It may have cost her an election. I don't know that. But I know as far as our family, it has pretty much turned our family upside down ever since this has happened. Our kids are getting phone calls, wondering what their parents have done. I've heard from relatives that are out of our community that have heard about it. My wife has a very high-level job, very visible job, that ethics is of the utmost importance, and this has also gotten to her workplace. And I don't know where that's going to go, what that will, how that will affect my wife's employment. So it's a big deal. I mean, this isn't just some funny little thing that he pulled here. This is important stuff. And I think when, when I originally got on the board, I no more than got on there and I voted against a vote that John Waller wanted me to make. And he got right in my face and threatened me and said all kinds of stuff and told me that he would never, ever deal with anything that I had to do with. He'd vote against me every chance he got. He'd do everything he could to work against me while he was on the board. And he has, for the 10 years. Now, it was one thing when it was just me, but now he's escalated to family members. And at this point, I think it's become much more serious. I'm concerned about what is going to come next. I have spent, my, my family has spent money already and is continuing to, to try to clear our family name personally. But I do not think it's our responsibility to clear our name as a race, as a sitting Rice Creek Watershed manager who has been defamed by a Rice Creek Watershed manager who has, in de facto, defamed me by the watershed. So I do feel it's the watershed's responsibility, or I think they have to be the ones to clear up the misconceptions that are out there. But farther than that, I think something needs to be done at this point. This has gone on long enough. I am scared of Mr. Waller, of what is going to come next. This has escalated beyond just me now to my family, and that's where the line has to be drawn. And I think it's up to the board to provide a ethical, safe workplace, not only for the staff, but for the managers. And I think we've been derelict in our duty up to this point to get this solved. But at this point, it's gotten serious enough that I think we have got to get together and figure out what we're going to do about it. Because I don't know if we need to have a security guard at every meeting. I don't know what we need to do. But I am concerned that this is escalating beyond what it has, and something needs to be done about it. I guess that's all I have to say at this time. I'll have plenty more to say at the board meeting. Thank you, Manager Wegeman. Thank you very much. Manager Waller, give you an opportunity to comment on all of this.
I wrote a letter of appreciation to Commissioner Reitart. It's about 180 words. It is factual. Nothing is untruthful in it. The Board of Managers recently authorized in January expenditures for support of Patricia Preiner's political campaign for reappointment. There were thousands and thousands of dollars. That's a private issue, political campaign to be reappointed. It's not to be supported by the public tax dollars. That's my point of view. I wasn't given the opportunity to discuss this matter before the expenses were made. I received that document in the mail after all of this had taken place several months. And when I asked for the documentation to look at the lawyer's burden and realized that it was going to be beyond January and asked for more, then I received the notice that this is attorney-client privilege and not to be talked about. And when I asked the Board of Managers to open this up, it was a four-to-one vote against that. Now, as for the issues of 17, 18, and 19 in those years, and the wetland issues, that's an awful cozy relationship that happened there. It's unusual that two managers would be chosen out of 14.
We weren't chosen.
They were selected by the engineering firm at a meeting. The next item on their budget was how to spend $1.8 million at that very same meeting, over five years, to develop the wetland banking credits on these two properties. They'd have been selected out of the 14. And then later on, we had large pay increases for the managers. And as it was pointed out in this document that you have, it was a three-to-two vote. All of that may be just coincidence, if you believe in coincidence. Now, I've read this document that's been prepared today, and I do not support it. What I believe should be done is that President Preiner should pay every penny back that the district has expended in supporting her campaign for nomination. The document that was sent to Anoka County is over, about $2,600, and there are other expenses. And in addition, I think she ought to resign the presidency. This has resulted now in an issue about when the district provided the legal background for her candidacy, a lawsuit between the City of Circle Bines and the County Board of Anoka. We'll see what the outcome of that is. One of the things, Circle Bines is pointing out that they followed the rules, and the City of Columbus didn't. Therefore, their candidacy should be considered. So a judge will make the decision on how that's going to be done. But having the Watershed District provide the funding from the taxpayers to support President Preiner's campaign for reappointment is inappropriate. And I believe that breaks the bifurcation between government body and political office.
Are you done, John?
Thank you at this time, yes.
Okay. Marcy Weinert, you want to make a comment?
Marcy Warner? Well, unfortunately, there are a lot of issues that, John, you have just put in front of us that we have no information regarding. So today, I, we are talking about the the piece that was presented in a political flyer that had your name affixed to it as a Rice Creek Watershed Manager, which, Mr. Chair, in my view, is totally inappropriate. And with or without whatever it said. What it did say, we have had our staff and attorneys go back and look at the accusations that are in that particular piece and developed the information and the document that is before us today in this, in this motion. So to, obviously, this is a long-held challenge among managers that I have only now becoming more and more familiar with. So I can't speak to any of the accusations, but I find it very discouraging and disconcerting that as President Preiner had said in her opening remarks, this watershed is doing a terrific job with the water issues within our region. And all of this is a distraction from staff and from board members to be doing the work that we need to be doing.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So this is Mike Bradley. And I was on the board for all of these things. And I fully support as accurate and truthful the reply statement that our staff has put together for us. With regard to the wetland properties, we had 14 properties brought to us. Five were named as possible finalists. The board realized that it doesn't, and it need as much as it thought it was going to need in the way of future wetlands. It picked one property, and that property was owned by Rice Creek Watershed District. It was not owned by the Preiners. It was not owned by the Waggles. It was not owned by any of the 13 other applicants that came before us. No money was given to the Weggels or Preiners as a result of this, nor were they eligible to receive anything. This was Rice Creek-owned property, which was selected for further consideration. With regard to the election issue, Pat Preiner, John Waller, working with one of the cities that was not happy with some issues with us, tried to come up with its own slate of candidates and tried to insist that they had the right unilaterally to select who would serve on our board. Our attorney was contacted by the Anoka County Attorney and asked what was the role of the Anoka County when it had a request by a city to name a particular person to the board. And Anoka County concluded, working with Bowser, that Pat Preiner could be selected by the county if she was the county's preferred candidate, and she was. This is all laid out in our previous statement. So at this point, we moved and seconded the statement. We have three managers who may decide to recuse themselves, since they're directly involved. I don't care if they do or don't. I would do a roll-call vote to find out how they're going to respond to this. And John Waller, I'll call you first.
Are we voting on this as a motion?
Yes, we are. We already made the motion, seconded.
I vote no on the motion.
All right. Steve Wegeman? You're muted, Steve. You're still muted.
May I ask you a question before I vote?
Yes.
What is considered a quorum in this?
So we have a quorum of five.
So you need three votes for it to go?
No, we only need, we only need two votes.
You need two votes. Okay, I'm going to abstain.
All right. Weinert? Marcy?
I vote yes.
Pat Preiner?
I'll abstain.
Bradley says yes, so the vote passes two to one with two abstentions. The next issue we have to do, distress, is what are we going to do with this statement? First of all, there's, at the very bottom of it, there's an open question mark. Do we want to provide a name of a person to be contacted? I would propose that since this is a board matter, that if you wish to provide a contact person, that I act as that contact person, and that we would include my Rice Creek. and that we would include my Rice Creek Watershed District email as the contact point. That's it. And so I ask for what your preference is.
Mr. Chair, I think that's entirely appropriate. This is Manager Wyman.
All right. Does anyone disagree with that?
This is Manager Wagaman. I agree with that. That's perfectly good with me.
This is Manager Pryner, and I also agree.
And John, do you have any comments on that small piece?
You're the acting chairman of this committee at this time for this issue, so you're the appropriate contact person. I don't disagree with that.
All right. So Nick and Teresa, I'd ask that you add that to the bottom of that statement. Next thing, an issue for us is distribution to Washington County. I've given some thought to this. My proposal is that I would forward this to Washington County Administrator and the Washington County Commissioners. Just a pretty much a straight-up transmittal to them with the two pieces of information, the material that has John J. Waller's name on it and the statement by us with a request that we be placed on the agenda of the Washington County Board for November, I think it's 17th. The way the Washington County Board works is they, you could, like, we have open mic. You could go to open mic. But first one of those is tomorrow. It would normally be tomorrow, but they don't have one tomorrow. Next one they have is on Election Day. Then they're going to be too busy on Election Day to care about other things. So the first time that this could be done would be November 17th. And so I would propose to ask that we be given time on November 17th on their agenda to present that statement and this issue for their consideration. Does anyone have a different proposal, or is that acceptable?
I agree with that, Manager Bradley.
Okay. Pryner? Steve?
That's fine.
John?
That's fine with me, too, as, yep.
Yeah. So John, that's how I proposed to bring it to Washington County's attention. And of course, if they put it on the agenda, I know you'll be there.
Well, I hope that you bring it to the Washington County agenda. And you're going to bring it to the, what date again? 17th?
We're going to ask, I'm going to ask for 17th, if we can get on their agenda for the 17th.
Yes.
Okay. Then the next issue is how do we distribute this otherwise? And we've had a request by Pat and Steve that presumably we would mail this to everybody in Columbus. And I can see some reason for doing that. After all, they got the other information, and this is just leveling the playing field on that information. The alternative argument is the reason, at least the reason I'm upset about this, is that it engaged us, John engaged us in local politics. And John, that's my grievance. My grievance, I don't, you know, we've had lots of fights. And we, you know, we work them out, whatever, or don't work them out. But when you take Rice Creek and you put us in the middle of local elections, the mayor and the city councilman and the Anoka Commissioner, that's not appropriate. That's not appropriate for any of us, much less someone representing a particular county. So that's why I'm not necessarily in favor of us mailing this out. I would personally prefer that we have Teresa work to get this statement immediately in the hands of all of the candidates for city council, for the county, and the mayor. And let them, if they want to distribute, they can distribute it. And then also, I think we, can we, Nick, can we put this on our website?
Certainly, we could place it on the website. And by the distribution you're referencing, I suspect you're just saying simple email communication. This is not a mass mailing or anything like that you're suggesting.
That's my suggestion. But, you know, I'm only one vote.
I would like to speak to that, Manager Bradley, please. How are the residents supposed to understand? They're never going to get this information. Number one, today is Monday, and we're all a week out of the election. So without us stating the facts of the watershed, since John represented himself as a watershed manager, how are they supposed to know? They're the important ones. I don't care about administrators. I don't care about candidates. It's the people of the Columbus area, residents, that should have the right to know the truth.
That are going to be voting. And this is Manager Wagaman. I would like to tack onto that. We have got a lot of time and money invested in this campaign. And I think we have a right to have the record corrected. And I don't think it should be us that has to do it. We didn't, we didn't do it. A manager of the Rice Creek Watershed did. And I think they're the ones that should have to correct it. And I think it should have to go to the people that are going to vote. That's what the whole thing's about. I mean, when I look at this, and my wife has spent this whole time campaigning, and this comes out, and there should be a rebuttal to this. And it shouldn't have to come out of my pocket, I don't think. It will, if you don't, I'll have to. But, and Pat will have to. But I don't think that's fair.
RC?
Well, I'm thinking about this two ways. One is just logistically how we can get it out, we, the watershed, could get it out in time, as opposed to the campaigns that may have direct mailing information or emails or their own websites. So you're right, Pat, it's a week before. And what is the best way to get this information to the voters?
Well, I had thought about possibly it could be put into the local paper, but the deadline was at noon today. I don't believe a campaign should send it out because then it says paid for by that campaign, which isn't true. I mean, it's not, then people just assume it's more campaign material. This isn't campaign material. This is correcting the record of Rice Creek Watershed District managers. So I think it can be turned around. It can be gotten out. And it could be in the mail, and they receive it by maybe Thursday, Thursday or Friday. We have the names. They have the lists. We have all that. And we can provide it to the watershed if they need it. But basically, it's only, I mean, Columbus is quite small. What do we have? I just was reading it. Not too many people. It's about 1,800 or something mailing. And that could be turned around and gotten out. I mean, it could be done simply. My point is it can't come from a campaign because we aren't, the campaign isn't the one who's doing this. The watershed is responsible for putting out the correction.
Manager Bradley?
Yes, sir.
As acting chair, I would suggest perhaps you want a bit of guidance from counsel, these two issues, the campaigning and the district's neutral position on that and the proper use of district funds, you know, needs to be adhered to. If you think that's important, I'd welcome a question or a comment from Louis.
Well, I already know his answer, but I'll let him give it.
Okay. Fair enough.
Managers, the legal question about the cost of distributing this statement is one of public purpose. Is there a legitimate lawful public purpose served by the watershed district expending its funds to issue this statement in response to the brochure? Our view is that there is a legitimate lawful purpose served in the sense that there were claims made about the decisions of the watershed district and its board. And this is a statement in response to those claims. And the notion that the mailing happening in the same vehicle that the initial claims were made is a proportional expenditure in response to address those claims. I think there are certainly reasons why you, as a board, may decide, and you've discussed them, why you may refrain from doing that. And ultimately, it's your judgment within these legal boundaries of what is an appropriate expenditure of the watershed district. But in terms of whether there is a lawful purpose served, it would focus on the district's interests in responding to the claims made in that document.
Thank you. That was helpful. So what we have here is a manager of the Rice Creek Watershed has falsely distributed information about individual managers as well as the integrity of the watershed. With that in mind, it seems to me like the watershed has a public purpose to protect our reputation and put forth the document that we've discussed that has corrected the allegation. I'm back again to what's the best way to...
Is now exiting.
Continue, please.
So perhaps a turnaround time to get to, get this information out to the voters of Columbus is appropriate for the watershed to act upon. Although I would do it with the caveat, having been involved in elections, that I hate to see an organization insert themselves. But what's happened is we've been dragged into this by the misdeeds of a manager.
Yes, Manager Waller is the one who inserted himself. We're trying to correct the issue.
So make it clear, then, you would support us providing and working to get this stuff mailed out to all of the citizens in Columbus?
I would support that, yes.
All right. Well, then that's what we will do.
That's what we'll do.
I'm not going to put us in a position where we can't do anything because we've only got two people voting, or, so. I'll make, do you please make a motion, RC, to direct staff to...
I would make...
Quickly, it's reasonable to mail, you know, get this mailed out to everyone.
Mr. Chair, because of the public purpose of correcting the information that is out there about the Rice Creek Watershed, I would support staff to spend the energy and the resources to mail this statement to every voter in the Columbus area for the public purpose of protecting the good name of the Rice Creek Watershed.
So I will second that motion. Nick, any discussion?
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Mine? Bradley, seconded.
Very good. I heard reference every voter in the city. Might I suggest every address or...
Yeah, that would be correct.
The resident, every resident of Columbus.
And, you know, Teresa can work with, you know, Pat says they've got those mailing lists and things. Try to simplify how we do that.
Yeah.
And make that possible. So I will do a roll call vote. Waller?
No. The watershed district is continuing to interject itself into the political activities of others.
Hey, John, who interjected themselves here? Who interjected themselves?
Just as they did earlier this year.
Who interjected themselves? I believe this is your name. You interjected yourself.
Steve Wagaman? Steve, your vote?
My, well, actually, to send the letter out, I'm going to vote yes.
Okay. Wyman says yes. Pryner?
I'll abstain.
Abstain. Bradley, yes. So it will pass three-to-one.
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Certainly.
John, when I came on this board, it was very clear, made very clear to me that we could have our personal opinions, and we had our managerial opinions or responsibilities. If that would have been put forward as John T. Waller, we would not have an issue. But you have dragged the entire watershed into the Columbus election process. To me, that is inexcusable. We are not in a position where we have any right to be involved in the election activities. This is extremely disappointing and offensive to every one of us.
Well said.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Well, first of all, I wrote a letter to the commissioner, not to anyone in Columbus. How my letter was, becomes a piece of campaign material in the City of Columbus? I don't know. But I wrote a letter, I wrote a letter to the commissioner. And I wrote a letter of appreciation to the commissioner for his work. I believe that this board interjected itself into the local politics when it had Smith Partners and the staff write out for the Anoka County Board in an issue that's now become, is really none of our concern as to who is politicking or their political campaign. No business in there of spending many, many dollars to verify or provide support for a campaign. None at all. And we're doing it again right now.
Our attorney to address that, please?
Manager Pryner, Manager Waller, our statement fully addresses this. It explains clearly how this came to be occurred. It is in all of our interests that we have the best qualified people appointed, that we don't allow a city to hijack the appointment process, that people are appointed by the county. The county of Anoka agreed with that.
Is now joining.
We have the person appointed appropriately by Anoka County. John, you were way out of bounds. And as far as I'm concerned...
Just a minute now. I was, Mike, I was not involved in any of that appointment process. The first I became aware of what you're doing was when I received the email that said Louis Smith and his three pages. Then I realized we'd spent money on this. The district had spent tax dollars on supporting the campaign eligibility of President Pryor. That's her responsibility.
It was requested.
To spend that money herself on her own campaign. It's not the responsibility of the district, regardless of who asked.
By Anoka County to have the watershed district respond. We had nothing to do with it. Anoka County requested it.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There you go.
I'll make the motion.
John seconded. All right. We'll see you all on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Multiple people are now exiting. Multiple...